I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for our health. We thank you for this city, for the great things that you are allowing to happen here. We just pray that you will help us to continue to keep our focus on you, be with this council today, give them the wisdom and the knowledge they need in making the important decisions that affect everyone in this city. God, we just pray that you will continue to be with those in our community who are hurting, who are hungry, who are sick. God, we just pray that you will meet those needs as only you can. And in the end, we promise to give you the glory and the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, this time we'll have our update from our EMA, Mr. Josh. Glad to have you here this morning.
Good morning, ma'am. Councilman Worthy asked me if, before everything started, if I had good news or bad news. So I actually get to give some good news today. Ms. Gaitler is unable to be with us. She's got family that are in COVID quarantine, so she asked that I deliver this report today. So by the numbers, numbers this seven days, the previous seven days, is 46.2%. That puts us right at 6,156 cases since the beginning of the year. Our seven-day average is 111 cases per day for that same period of time. Total number of deaths, we've had 544 since the pandemic started, 13 so far this year, and three of those deaths occurred in the past seven days. So now, the good news. The daily case rates are down 56.7% from last week. The hospitals are staying pretty much stable, I believe. Chief Reed and I were discussing numbers, and we're both in agreement that, you know, they're still in a situation where they're full, the units are full, so we're just trying to encourage everybody that can go to their own physician to have testing done or to have a checkup done, not to use the emergency room because they are already pressed beyond what they would normally have to handle. So the number for the schools, I'll share these with you. These numbers are going to come from our elected officials and partners that we have on the Wednesday COVID calls. Last week, Mr. Reddick reported 537 cases that was occurring at the start of the semester. That was made up of 425 students and 112 teachers. They are currently at 52, a humongous improvement over where they were at the start of the semester, and they are 0.99% on their infection rate. Edwah County Schools, the numbers that they reported as of the last numbers that were submitted, which was on the 27th of last month, they had combined 435 students and faculty that were positive. That trended down, and now they have 12 staff and students that are currently affected. Their attendance rate has come up from 70% up to 86% now, which, again, is another good improvement. And then the last thing that I was going to mention, actually, is not COVID-related. We've been monitoring a potential weather situation that's going to affect us all day Thursday into Friday. It's going to be a significant rain producer. We could see up to three inches of rain locally. And we know how a lot of times flooding affects different areas of the city, so we just wanted folks to know ahead of time that there is the potential that we may see some flooding issues all day Thursday, and then it should wrap up sometime before lunch on Friday. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Councilman.
Just want to say thank you for all you all doing.
It takes a team, and we're very fortunate that we have a very good team.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Give Ms. Gaitler a thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we'll have a report from our chief, Chief Reed.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Council Mayor. Be very brief this morning. Our numbers are holding steady at the fire department. The number of PUIs have dropped slightly, but it's in that statistical error range, so there's nothing to report on. Since this wave has came through, we've had 32 firefighters out with COVID. I currently, today, only have one out, so we count that as a blessing. Both hospitals remain at capacity. The ambulance services are overtaxed. Throwing more ambulances is the problem won't help because the ambulances get hung up in the ER because they have so many patients. So we encourage everyone to try to, you know, self-triage. If it can go somewhere besides the ER, they need to do it. Our fire and EMS personnel from the fire department can get there rapidly, but the ambulances may be an extended wait to get an ambulance on the scene to get them to the hospital. Just because of that backlog, the ambulances are trying as hard as they can. This is not a complaint against them. But unfortunately, it's business as usual in COVID right now.
Okay. Any questions to the fire chief? We thank you for the information that you bring us.
Thank you all.
Chief, what's the waiting time at the hospital that the ambulances are having to wait now when they take somebody?
It varies, sir. Sometimes it can be as short as 30 minutes, it can be up to four hours, and that is not a Gaston-specific problem, that's a national problem. We're not bashing our hospitals by any means. It's just they can't get the patients out of the ER upstairs because you have so many patients in the hospital, so the ambulances get stuck in the ER and can't offload their patients at the emergency rooms. But like I said, that's a national problem, that's not a Gaston-specific.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. We will continue our agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting on January the 25th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 21st through the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation? Okay. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 928 Hooks Lake Road in District 2. This is Lynn D. Drew. And Lynn D. Drew in care of Shelley Rayling, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the building department. This case involves a mobile home. We filed it in January of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item was item 12, but no action is needed by the council for 915 Ditchfield Avenue. It's already been abated by the owner. Our next item is a public hearing abating nuisance on property located at 1320 Stroud Avenue in District 2. Amanda Barber Dreams of It LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this?
I'm Amanda Barber.
All right. If you give your name and address, please.
Amanda Barber, 1320 Stroud. And I'm the sole owner of the property. Dreams of It is no longer in interest.
Pardon?
I'm the sole owner of it, and Dreams of It's no longer the owner. I took ownership on November 29th of 2021.
Okay.
And I would like to have more time to work on the property. I'm disabled and have had some financial issues due to COVID-19, but I would like to abate, I would like to fix the property, especially now that I have ownership of it. I've had many problems getting it fixed without having ownership.
Ms. Barber, how much time do you need?
Honestly don't know, sir, because during the inspection, they literally failed me for every single thing. There is nothing that was passed on the inspection, so I'm unaware of what exactly needs to be fixed in the home. I had power on in the home at the time that the inspection was done, and they've cut my power off, so I'm not able to work very easily without power tools or anything to be able to plug in. I was never able to get a water meter because of the owner living in South Carolina, and he refused to come here to help me get the meter. So I'm kind of, I don't know exactly what needs, all needs to be fixed on the property because it literally was failed for everything on a 20-minute inspection.
Ms. Barber, real quick, just a point of clarification. When you came up, you gave your name and address. You aren't actually occupying this residence right now.
No, sir.
Okay, I just want to make clear, because a lot of times, there's confusion in the community about us kicking people out of their houses or tearing down houses that they live in.
I will say, at the time of the inspection, I was staying there.
Without a water meter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Where is your correct address now?
I live at 206 North 23rd, Apartment C. I'm sorry, what, sir?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you knew it's not legal to occupy a residency without water.
I now know that. I did not know it at the time.
Okay. But just to be clear, you don't actually reside in this house right now?
Not any longer, no, sir.
Gotcha.
Once Mr. Harbison told me that it was illegal to stay there without water, even though we had alternate means, we did, in fact, leave the home.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we're going to hear from the building department here in a second, Ms. Barber, but please understand, if it were, you know, if you had a plan and, okay.
I do have a plan, sir. I mean, I'm planning on finishing the home. The plumbing's already done, the electric is primarily done, the outside was failed for the fascia boards and some, we've been replacing windows and such. I have come up to the building apartment, asked if I needed appropriate permits. They told me if my building supplies were under $50, I didn't need a permit. So far, as far as I know, I'm doing everything that I'm required to do. I just, I don't know what I need to do to get the electric back on so that I can do the, majority of the work needs electrical, I need some type of electric to plug in things to be able to do the work.
Yeah, so again, we're going, and all of that's encouraging, for sure. We're going to hear from the building department.
I absolutely want to improve, I bought the home to fix it up and improve it. That is my, that is my, I'm planning on living in the home for many years.
Yeah, so the second part of what I was going to say is, you know, we're encouraged to some degree by what we're hearing. I think it's important for you to stay in communication with the building department so that they can understand what's being done.
Okay.
It's going to be a while before they get around to you, so again, that's why it's important to communicate with them.
Okay.
Let me hear from them first, and then we'll determine whether or not we're going to allow for additional time, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Mr. Harbison.
Madam President, we filed this case in August of 2021. We were actually called out to the property by the Department of Human Resources. There have been no improvements to the property, there are no permits that are current, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a public hearing, is a resolution on abatement of property on 806 Tidmore Bend Road in District 2. This is Jay Dewayne Gardner being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves trash and debris. We went to court, we got a guilty verdict, but we were unsuccessful in having the property cleaned up. We're asking for a resolution today to allow us to go on the property and do that. Thank you.
Councilman Williams, behind you. Could you step back up to the podium? I just want to ask a question. You know, we've been talking about garbage and garbage fees and going to court. This would not be the same type of thing about going to court. This is a totally different, as far as the garbage and trash is concerned here.
This is a trash and debris nuisance that we actually filed against the property and went to municipal court, which is the first step in the process. Usually, even with a guilty verdict there, if the owner shows up, you're talking about a monetary fine, but the judge can't give us from municipal court the authority to go on to the property. We would have to actually issue a citation for each day that that nuisance existed and that just, we found through the years, that's just spinning your wheels. So normally after that, with it not being totally abated, we'll bring the case to the city council with a resolution, then we can go on the property and do that.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. What is the pledge of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1217 Gray Street in District 7, Emanuel Eugenius being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Okay. If you'll come forward and give your name and address.
Manny Eugenius, I reside at 604 Turntown. Okay. Okay, I, we have pictures to back up everything that we're going to discuss, so I don't know how much time you want to give us, but we have pictures of the house where the tenant was protected by the COVID thing from the CDC, and so we couldn't, we couldn't touch these people until the city got them out, you know, for, I think it was a DHS thing, I'm not sure. Okay. So anyway, since then, we've been remodeling the house, you know, and so I'm not sure why I'm here, you know? Like I said, I can back everything with pictures and everything before and after where we are at this point, so I don't know if Brian wants to speak, or I can come back and speak to him, or I don't know how this works, so I'll just be honest.
Well, are you working on the house?
Oh, yeah, we've been working on it. We own 41 houses in the City of Gaston, and so we maintain these houses, and we've already remodeled 41 West Tuscaloosa, we've remodeled 1207 Gray Street, we've remodeled 114th High Street, and this is in the same.
Well, I guess my next question is, have you been in contact with Mr. Harbison concerning that house as to what needs to be done in order to bring it up to standards?
Well, being that we do this, we know what needs to be done. That's what we've been doing, so. Now, the windows are boarded up, and the reason they're boarded up is, you know, I can go through a long list of how the house was damaged and vagrancies and set fire to my deck and all kinds of things, so.
So are you asking for time, a certain time?
Yeah, we're continuing to work on it, you know, I can't tell you it's going to be a month. We were ravaged, our whole crews, our plumbers, electricians, carpenters, they were all ravaged with COVID. You know, it put us probably six months behind, you know? And so as long as he sees progress, I don't, anytime he wants to come up there, any of y'all call me and we'll get you in the house. But we've got pictures to show where we remodeled the outside, the inside, everything. It's just a slow process, you know, so.
All right, well, we'll talk to Mr. Harbison.
Okay. Like I said, we've got pictures before and after.
First of all, thank you, Manny, for being here. I appreciate you and what you do through the rental inspection process. As you can tell in the pictures, this house has had considerable work done to it. Had he not been here today, I would be asking you for a resolution so we could go out there and finish what he started. We do not allow residential property to be boarded up for obvious reasons, and I understand the concern of property owners when windows are consistently broken out. You know, for, you wouldn't want to live next door to a house that was boarded up, and so kind of a catch-22 there. We would prefer the house to be occupied, and I know he is a landlord, would prefer that that house be occupied by someone who would actually take care of the property and pay rent. So what we were going to ask for today would be a resolution to abate the nuisance with the understanding with the council between our department and you is that we had no intention of removing the house. We were going to provide the necessary work to complete it, but I would tell Manny in public today, finish the house, and we'll close the case. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so what is the pleasure of the council?
Okay, madam, I just have a concern. You don't want me to ask for a 90-day, you just want to go ahead and go the abate, and then Manny's going to finish, it's already fixed 90% anyway, and then you'll dismiss the case, right?
I would not ask you to table it more than 30 days because this is general practice of the council.
Yeah, I'm just saying, definitely.
If you ask for a resolution, doesn't really matter, it's just the cost of having to file paperwork. If Mr. Eugenius can, can tell us that it'll be completed in 30 days, then that's what I would ask, that'd be tabled.
Okay, Manny, what we're going to do is just go ahead and motion to abate, and then you've got plenty of time anyway, so I see no problem with that. I just want to make sure it's all right with you, instead of the motion to table. Okay. Motion to abate.
If we abate, excuse me, he won't be able to get a permit. You already have a permit?
Yeah, we've got a permit.
He's already got, he's permitted. I'm just, all I'm doing is just giving him time without going through all this paperwork again, because he's going to finish at the house, as you saw the picture.
Yeah.
It's fine, so that way we won't have to do anything, we just dismiss it at that time. Okay. Motion to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is a Family Dollar Store of Alabama LLC doing business as Family Dollar Store 20870 located at 1225 West Megan Boulevard in District 3, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution approving issuance of a special event alcoholic beverage license to Strut Event Services and Company for Jacksonville State University Meet the Coach event to be held at 318 Broad Street on February the 9th, 2022. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to Economic Development Agreement with Los Argos Properties for a location of a Los Argos Mexican restaurant at 401 Megan Boulevard, and this is to extend the opening date to April the 1st, 2022. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next three items relate to drainage studies that involve the American Rescue Plan funding. The first one is a resolution authorizing agreement with the JBWNT and Company, and this is for the Oak Park area, and the amount is $115,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution if there's any, is there any discussion on it also?
I didn't get the motion or the second.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry. It's hard to see and hear with those masks on. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our second drainage is this area for along 9th Street and Lay Street, and the amount is $24,700. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, which is drainage, and this is for the area along the East Broad Street from 22nd Street to 15th Street North, and the amount is $47,300. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the State of Alabama Department of Transportation, and this is for administering the U.S. Department of Transportation Financial Assistance for Transportation Planning in the Gaston Urbanized Area. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Gaston Edwah County Emergency Management Agency and various facilities for safer places program, and this is regarding the use of facilities to be made available to the public prior to and during a severe weather event. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, well, Ms. Perdido, I do have one. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3469 for a Ford Transit 350 passenger van, XLT. This is for the police department. As far as you now consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
All right, no other new business. We have a citizen request, and we ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Robert Hunter, reallocating American Rescue Funds.
My name is Robert Lewis Hunter. I reside at 1109 Sixth Avenue, and I just wanted some information about updates on the ARP funds specifically around allocation when it comes to coronavirus-related activities and studies. When the process started back in July, I think it was July 17th of 2021, there was a application that y'all had sent out specifically for how the community wanted to use the funds. If I remember correctly, it was over 85% of the applications and their active want for the use of the funds were mostly ignored for checks on the infrastructure we need and departments that were else, were also in need. I was asking, would there be any consideration for reallocation of those funds, in part because originally, there may have been changes to the list that I was unaware of, because I could be completely wrong again, but I don't remember the Way of the Cross being allocated those funds originally. Now, of course, I could be 100% wrong on that.
Are you, excuse me, Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Are you asking us a question?
I'm asking specifically if there was some change in reallocation. If possible, we could crack that open to what the citizens asked for when they originally act, when they put out the application for the ARP funds.
I believe it, there's, there's Ms. Rosser, there's Mr. Payne, and there's Mr. Hall. They were the sort of responsible for the budgeting, getting that information to us, and probably you would, it would be a lot more helpful to you and you would get more information if you would make contact with them, and I'm pretty sure that they would give you as much information as they can.
Okay, thank you.
I just opened up my email earlier this morning, and for the infrastructure bill, there is about 465 pages of how you can spend that infrastructure bill, so if anybody wants to, all you have to do is go to bill.gov, and they'll give you the 465 pages of how that infrastructure money can be filled, spent. When I saw the 600, 465 pages, I just read the title of it and closed it back up. Do you have any comments? I think I'll start with Councilman Worthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just happy to be back. For transparency, I tested positive for the coronavirus, so I'm doing much better now. I'm happy to be back and happy to see everybody. Please, people, take your shots. Don't, please, I had my shots, my booster, so it was just like a little cold to me. But some people that don't want to get these shots, that, you know, you can go in the hospital, and maybe something else might happen to you, so I'm just happy, thank the good Lord I'm here, and pray for our city, pray for the people that's going through it and people that's been through it, because we all need to come together on this, on this issue. That's the only way we gonna be able to protect ourselves. And one thing I'm finding now, from now on, I'm treating everybody as they got it. I'm not, you know, there's grandbabies and all, because we, you know, we gotta get this thing, that's the only way we gonna get over this, but thank you.
Good. Councilman Worthy?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Beck?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, just a couple of things. We considered some new business today. That was about $43,000 for a new prisoner transport van. That was the thing that we suspended the rules for and approved today. And also, I'll just say to you, Mr. Hunter, I'll go back and look, but Way of the Cross was in that original allocation of ARP funds. It was the United Way, Way of the Cross, and I think there was three or four other agencies that were appointed. If you remember, I think you and I even had a conversation about the reason that we give funds to organizations like the United Way is because they have very extensive financial auditing practices, and so for smaller nonprofits that are seeking funding, a lot of times, it's been the practice of the city to redirect those requests to the United Way, and then we give a larger lump sum of the funds to the United Way and allow them to allocate smaller amounts into other nonprofits. But I just went back and double-checked. I'll, I'll make sure what the date of the council meeting was, but Way of the Cross was included in that original funding, but I do think there's some opportunities there, especially with the infrastructure bill coming along after those original ARP allocations to where maybe we can kind of re, re-itemize some of those funds, so, thank you. No, you're good. No, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, it's a great suggestion.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Lieutenant Hurd, whether he was the one that pushed a little bit, get this van after all these years, and that thing was worn out, so kudos to him for being that persistent, I appreciate it.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
I would just like to say, and this will be partly kudos to the city planner, city engineer, went over to Gaston State Complex Park. It's going to be beautiful. The walking park that they've already done, they have the soccer, the, the complex is awesome, and that's what you get when you have partnership between Gaston State Community College and the City of Gaston. It's going to be great. Talked to some of the gentlemen who were doing the cementing over there, and so got some names in case we need minorities. So I just wanted you all to know, if you all have not been over there to see the Gaston Sports, even the entrance looks beautiful, and so it's a good thing that this, what the city and Gaston State is doing together. As I said, that's what you get when you work together and you work as partners. I think it's not gonna be the same. There's a park over there that a lot of people don't even know anything about. It's not up to speed, but it will be, and I think Councilman Wilson, they plan on moving that pickleball that you talked about up a little bit in the area, but it's gonna be a awesome sports complex for traveling ball, and so just want to thank the administration, Dr. Murphy at Gaston State for all that they're doing. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.